Good evening, everyone. Today is the time and place set for the August 2022 regular Royal Oak Planning Commission meeting. Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order, and we'll start out by starting with Commissioner Beke down there. Please introduce yourself for the record.
And Beke.
Eric Klooster.
Charlene Douglas, City Commissioner.
Tim Twing, Director of Community Development.
Aaron Liao, City Attorney.
Mike Fournier, Mayor of the amazing city of Royal Oak.
Woody Gantina.
And Paul Curtis.
And I'm Gary Casada, the chairperson. All right. Before we start, does anybody have any additions to the agenda for tonight on the commission here? Anything that way? Anything this way? Seeing none? All right. So first order of business is the approval of the July 12, 2022, meeting minutes. If you've had a chance to look at these, and I want to thank Commissioner Gantina for sitting in, doing a great job. I didn't watch the film. Are there any comments, questions about these minutes, or a motion?
I move to approve the minutes for July 12, 2022.
There's support.
Support.
Support from Mr. Gantina. All right. Any discussion? Call for the voice vote. All those in favor of adopting the meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was everybody. So, motion passes. All right. Next order of business is public comment on non-agenda items. If you are a member of the public, you'd like to speak on something that is not on the agenda, we invite you to come up, state your name, take three minutes to give us your presentation. Is there anyone? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close that, public comment, and we'll go on to old business. First matter of old business is the recommendation on master plan consultant to the city commission. So we're going to return to Mr. Twing just to remind us where we're at on this.
Well, you have conducted interviews with three firms. Those three firms have provided you with proposal responses. The planning commission has met on two occasions since then, choosing to postpone in each of those meetings to get a, hopefully, a full house of members, and you have that this evening. Your first action is a recommendation on which consultant you would recommend to the city commission. I would point out that Mr. Murphy's here. He did, has been coordinating the master plan review process, and actually, we both put together kind of a staff overview that we distributed to the planning commission members last week. So it's really in your court to do, adopt a motion to recommend a firm to the city commission that the city can enter into a contract with.
Okay. And we've already had a public hearing on this, so this is, on this only between the commissioners?
Really not how a public hearing on it. You've had several public meetings, including the interviews with the consultants. All of those are public meetings where people could come and express their opinion, and they've been posted, so.
Okay. So just to be clear, is there a public hearing required for this?
Not at this point.
Okay. Great. All right. So commissioners, we'd like to open the discussion. I know you've all have some opinions that you've already expressed on this, but you've had a chance to let things simmer, and so I would invite the commissioners to proceed with some commentary. Commissioner Douglas.
I was going to ask, we kind of touched on this at our last meeting. I mean, everyone here has expressed at length their, no, you two haven't.
I expressed an opinion. I didn't come to a conclusion.
No, but at our last, at the meeting, you weren't here, and you weren't here.
Yes.
So neither of you had a chance to speak, and I'm confident that you both heard all of us speak. So it seems like you two should have a chance to weigh in on your observations, if you so choose.
Nobody, certainly, if nobody else is feeling they need to add anything, I'm going to say, Mr. Klooster, which one of us wants to go first?
Okay. So I was here for the, I read the proposals. I was here for the interviews. I did some further research. I have to tell you, I asked a lot of professionals about this, even some people found out a state. I took some advice, and I went and read some master plans. I read the Las Vegas master plan that Smith Group put together. I read the Erie, Colorado, master plan that DPC put together, and it just made the decision more difficult, because they were both impressive. It was a ton of information, and it just goes to show how difficult this decision is, but also how the consequence of the decision, I feel, is not as weighty as it would be, because all of the candidates are good candidates, and appreciate the department's commentary. I thought that was very helpful as well. I have to say that, Commissioner Douglas, I watched your commentary, and I was sort of moved by the emotional argument about this keeping it at home, and I feel the same way. But my initial reaction from the very beginning was the DPC was an appropriate match for us. I feel more so. I know they're in Birmingham. I think they've got enough local information, and I think that they would be the party that I would support. However, I'm just going to say, I don't know what the rest of you or Mr. Twing feels about this, some of the concerns about DPC was the compressed timeframe. But, you know, we don't have a contract in front of us. That's going to be negotiated. If we feel, or if the department feels, that they don't want that compressed timeframe, and we were to offer a contract to DPC, but we want to change something in the contract, they either would have to agree to it, or we'd move on to the next. So I'm not really worried about that. I'm really not worried about the compressed timeframe either, but I'm just saying there are some things that can be addressed, some concerns that can be addressed in the contracting process. I would also suggest that people consider, for that reason, we have a one-two recommendation. I would recommend myself, I would say DPC number one, Smith Group number two. And if we do that, then if the first party, we cannot come to a contract with, then we have some, a second for our recommendation. So that's what I would suggest.
Mr. Klooster, proceed.
So, not being at the last meeting, I've had two months to dwell on this, and my initial reaction at the interviews was leaning towards favoring Smith Group, because they're architects, and I'm an architect, and I like what architects do generally, how they respond to planning. So that was my initial thoughts. After dwelling on it further, I feel like I have swayed a little bit off of that, and more towards my second choice of House Hill Levine. I think they're, I'm generally a big fan of their approach to how they get engagement through all the different channels that they leverage to get engagement. I was a little concerned, especially after some of the commentary that we got and emails from the staff review of the way the fees were split up with Smith Group, and how front-loaded they were, and potentially the impacts on the deliverable, and from speaking to some other people who have worked with their planning group recently, really, really enjoying the community engagement part, but then feeling a little underwhelmed at the deliverable at the end. So from that, I would say that my one and two have probably flipped, and I would lean towards a House Hill Levine number one, and a Smith Group number two.
All right. Thank you. All right. Having heard those comments, do other planning commissioners want to respond, or clarify, or supplement their previous thoughts or comments? All right.
I was going to say that, I think at the end of the last meeting, we had suggested, and you two just followed that process, that we would all share our first and second choice, or one, two, three, however, and kind of see if that brings us into some kind of consensus. I think that's what the recommendation was at the end of our last meeting. So I don't know if we want to do that, just to simply see where everybody's at, and that's in short order, and then see where the discussion goes after that. That's what we had said at the end of the last meeting.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I think that's a good idea if nobody has a counter or object to that. I've already stated who my one-two, and Mr. Klooster has stated, and I don't remember if you stated a one-two, Ms. Beke.
I can restate, and so having reviewed again all of the materials through the whole process, and again, coming from a perspective, my perspective is, I believe here in Michigan, we need some great models and world-class models, and I think Royal Oak can be one of those models, and we have a lot of good things going for us. And I feel like my first choice is DPC for that reason. I would like to have that both U.S. as well as global experience, and also having worked internationally on local government issues. The new urbanism and that kind of approach is one of the things within our whole profession of land use that is held up worldwide, and so that's why I go there. And then my second choice is Smith Group for its local experience and its processes. So those are my firsts. That's my one and two.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else want to state who their one-two is?
Somebody keeping score?
I am.
I am, yeah.
Commissioner Douglas.
So I'm going to, I continue to feel that boots-on-the-ground is an important quality in a firm, and I continue to feel that Smith Group not only has that, but really expressed or showed us a knowledge of what I think are the important issues here in Royal Oak. The other two firms, when we asked them what they thought about, you know, what our big issues are, rattled off standard issues in the planning world. But I thought Smith Group really identified the potential for old versus new, and the need to handle that potential conflict and differing views. So Smith Group remains my first choice. I'm going to go with DPC. Commissioner Beke, I agree with their, I mean, they're pioneers in, they wrote the playbook for us, and we are exactly the kind of community that they aspire to create elsewhere in the world. Also, they are working with a local planning firm. And again, that boots-on-the-ground is important to me. House Hill Levine, yes, they've got the technology, they've got the razzle-dazzle stuff, but their connections here in Michigan are very limited, their subconsultants are very limited, so that's why I would place them third. And I, props to Joseph, and to Tim, and the views that they shared. I know you favor House Hill Levine, and I know why, I see that, but these are my views.
Thank you. Attorney to this side. Mr. Mayor.
I'll make it easy. I'm also Smith one, DPC number two, for both the reasons that Commissioner Beke, Commissioner Douglas presented. Can't agree more. Just if I had to break them out, I'd do Smith Group one.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Gantina.
So I'll go ahead and continue to complicate things. I have DPC one, Smith Group two. No need to reiterate, but basically all the same reasonings that were given in terms of what I think was the best fit, and who would be, you know, a good backup if that firm didn't work out.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis.
I would say DPC co-designed one. I think that their team of professionals that sat before us is the deepest, broadest team that we saw. I thought, certainly keep hearing from the staff memo and others that they wrote the book, I want the best, and I appreciate Ms. Beke's perspective on, you know, the national, international experience. I actually can rattle on quite a bit, but the mention of the condensed timetable, I tried to ask them directly about, and I really appreciated their answer, because my concern has to do with allowing for some feedback loop from the community, and because the quality of conversation, if I were to ask my friend Woody here about something he's not an expert in, I'm sure he's an expert in a lot of things, but there must be something, the initial answers I get from my friend Woody probably wouldn't be as good as the answers that we get to as we continue the conversation. So it's important to see that community engagement have a feedback loop. So that was my only concern with DPC, but the answer really impressed me as I thought about it, when they said, "The intensity of the timeframe allows for the conversation to progress." Because if we start a conversation today, Mr. Gantina and I, and don't pick it up for another several weeks, and then another several, we're going to end up starting back at the same point over and over. So I was really appreciating DPC co-design for those reasons. I think my second choice is House Hill Levine. I think that they have certainly the experience and expertise to do a tremendous job here. I guess I put Smith Group towards the bottom. I was also concerned about the front-loading of the fees. Some of the feedback I heard even at this table about experience with them, and the staff memo suggesting that they were concerned about the follow-through as well. So that's my rankings.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to make one more quick comment about that, that the Smith Group front-loading on the fee is also something that can be handled contractually.
Sure.
So I'm really not as worried about that. The last thing I would say about Smith Group, I also, I don't remember who told me to do it, and it was one of you guys, I also read the sustainability plan that I hadn't read before, which was authored by Smith Group, and it sort of cuts two ways, because it shows that they have the experience in working with us. It also shows they already made a contribution, because that sustainability plan is going to be contributed to the master plan. So Smith Group, one way or another, is going to be involved, or has been involved in the process. So we sort of already heard from Smith Group, and we'll probably continue to hear from them as long as that's something we need to refer to them. So that's my last comment, but I'm keeping score here. We see that there are four, DPC number one, and four, Smith Group number two, which is the majority, right there. So maybe somebody would like to follow up on that, but it seems to me that that might be the basis for motion. Commissioner Beke.
I just want a quick follow-up comment on the mix of expertise, again, in the DPC group, the economic perspective that was brought in, and the issues around housing, I thought was also very interesting. And the other comment I want to make about Smith Group is, is they did advise on the sustainability plan, and they did help put it together, but it was mostly driven by citizen participation, but that was kind of by design. They were only, they only had a small contract, and so some of the concerns about their follow-through and stuff, they weren't necessarily leading it, as I understand, it wasn't the contract that they had for that particular job, but they definitely were involved, and definitely are knowledgeable on that. Anyway, yep. So, yeah, that's the last comment.
To make a motion.
Oh, I would like to move that we recommend DPC as our preferred choice for the master plan, and as a second choice, Smith Group.
Is there support?
All support.
Support by Mr. Gantina. Is there any further discussion of this recommendation before we vote? Mr. Mayor.
Just seems to represent the, you know, majority of the planning commission here, which I trust, so I will be supporting the motion.
All right. Anybody else? Mr. Klooster.
Yeah, so I'm not going to support the motion. So yes, they're world-renowned, and they wrote the book, and this is probably some of my personal biases in here, but my general concern with people who write the book, they tend to have one play, is my concern. So that leads me to not be in favor of DPC. I'm sure they'll do, like, I generally think most of the tenants of new urbanism are strong. I generally think form-based codes are strong. I generally think the way they think about form influencing the way the city develops versus land use plans are strong. I just am a little concerned that it's generally penciled in already, and the community engagement is just going to fill in the cracks versus letting the community engagement drive what the priorities are.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, I will call for the vote, and I think we can do a voice vote here. All in favor of the motion to recommend DPC as first choice, Smith Group as the second choice, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, we have five in favor and two opposed. Motion passes. How does that, we just, you're going to tell them, right?
Yep. That's the recommendation.
Okay. Very good. All right. We'll move on to the next order of business here. This is a public hearing on a special land use SB 22-08-12 at 4313 West 13 Mile. Mr. Twing, can you give us a preview?
Certainly. Get it open here. The request you have in front of you is to add an outdoor patio in front of an existing restaurant on West 13 Mile Road, between Cummings Avenue and Garden Avenue, just a little bit east of Greenfield. It's an existing three-unit, three-unit commercial building that has a vacant space. As I indicated, it has a restaurant with alcoholic beverages, and then it has a, oh, a spa, I guess I'll refer to it as. In addition, in addition, there are two accessory off-street parking lots south of the public alley. On that, they have approximately 20 parking spaces, and there are eight behind the buildings themselves. In the neighborhood service, neighborhood business district, outdoor service cafes, whether they have alcohol or not, are considered a special land use, and so are establishments with the sale of alcohol. That's why you have it listed as a special land use in front of you this evening, is because of those two activities under the ordinance. We did provide the notice. So I indicated the petitioners proposing to add that outdoor service area. They did have, or they did install one that was part of the COVID-19, the city's response to allowing additional outside capacity at restaurants when those capacities were reduced. They did apply. Technically, it was never approved, and that staff was looking for additional information, and things kept getting added to it, but because of the city commission's position on trying to help and move it along, it was not dealt with other than to monitor it. Those considerations under the COVID-19 rules expired in April. The petitioner here is in front of you making a request to keep that cafe and certain components of that cafe. The restaurant itself, it's about 2,400 square feet. It would require 38 parking spots. As I indicated, there's 28 associated with the building in sight now. The outdoor cafe would be about 1630 in terms of area. That would add a requirement for 26 more spaces. So as part of your special land use approval, you would need to grant the petitioner permission to seek those variances from the zoning board of appeals. That's really the special land use report. Some of the site plan items, I'll walk through very briefly. We are asking that the plans be submitted on 24-by-36 sheets with the dimensions and scalable dimensions. We're asking that the parcel and right-of-way boundaries be added, so it's clear that all of the outdoor cafe and canopy do not encroach in a right-of-way. We're looking for a facade elevation and cross-sections, and other relevant details regarding the canopy that's proposed over the facility. We also are looking for notes to be added based on the petitioner's indication that there will be no stage, that that would be removed. There would be no outside music, or intercom, or other noise that would impact adjacent properties, and that all the fencing around it would be no higher than five feet, five inches. You'll see in the staff report that there is a garden that has been installed and is adjacent to the side streets and the accessory parking. Those are not, that's not permitted under the zoning ordinance, and the petitioner has indicated that that's not his, or it's not his garden. So we're recommending that that be taken back to standard landscaping pursuant to the site plan. And then, as I indicated, the TBA action, city commission approval of an amended plan of operation for the liquor license, and then basically all our standard contingencies, including that the exterior waste receptacles all be placed in the proper enclosure.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Twing? Commissioner Douglas.
This garden, Mr. Twing, do you have reason to think that they're using it as a source of material for their kitchen, or do you feel that this really is neighbor-generated and kindly provided by the applicant?
My understanding, based on staff's discussion with the applicant, it's not something they're using or taking care of.
And yet, it looks tidy. I mean, it looks carefree.
I understand. It's in a one-family zone, and community gardens are not a permitted use.
And yet, I think we are zoning a lot of people to have a garden in their front yard, does it not?
This is not, this is not their front yard.
I understand. Thank you. Oh, and so parking, I mean, essentially, this new structure doubles the amount of parking required while they are already deficient. Do you have concerns about that? Are they so, so, you know, hugely popular that, are we concerned that they are going to wind up interfering on local streets?
I'm not aware of any particular complaints. As I said, this cafe has been in operation for almost two years under the COVID.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Twing? Commissioner Beke.
Just a quick related comment regarding the garden, because I did go and look at the site today, and again, tying into our sustainability plan, even though it's not a permitted use right now, it's actually a better use environmentally than it would be if it were go-to-back the lawn or cement, and so I just wanted to comment that. And it did look like maybe the neighbors are taking care of it because it had a sign. Anyway, I just wanted to say that because I had gone out to look at it today.
Mayor. Yeah, since we're talking about the garden, you know, I'll refrain from giving my opinion at the moment, but just for clarification, I mean, if we were to move forward, I mean, if it's well-kept, I mean, could we make a provision that if it becomes, you know, unkempt or unattended to, that they would have to later, you know, resolve the issue? Or is that too much along the line of the?
Well, unless the petitioner claims it, it's on his property.
Right.
Unless he's going to become responsible for it, then I would recommend it be removed.
But even if it's, so maybe a different way to ask the question. If we were to remove that provision in the recommendation and remain silent on the garden, then that doesn't waive any options down the road if, for whatever reason, the garden becomes a problem.
Well, again, based on the information I have on hand, it's not being operated by the petitioner, it's on his property, which by definition would make it something that he's not responsible for, number one. Number two, the only place it would fall would be under a community garden, and those are not permitted in one-family residential. So this body really doesn't have the authority to grant that community garden, or would it be a condition to go to the zoning board of appeals?
Well.
If he wants to maintain it.
But I guess what I'm saying is, we could grant a site plan approval without the condition that the garden has to be remedied, correct? Because we're not saying, we're not allowing it, but we're not making it a condition.
Well, the only way I can see it staying is if you grant permission for him to go to the zoning board and ask for permission to keep it. Or he's got to say, "It's my landscaping, and I'm responsible for it." Neither of those have I.
Okay. Well, we have the petitioner, but Mr. Gantina.
I guess I just have a quick question as it relates to the responsibility. Isn't by nature the fact that it's their property, doesn't that make them responsible for the property itself? Now, I understand their statement is that the use of the property is something that's maintained by the neighborhood, but the reality is, they still own the property. Any requirements placed on that property are still that of the owner. Any requirements placed on that property are still that of the owner, despite their generosity in letting the neighbors use it. By nature, just by ownership, isn't, isn't everything their responsibility on that property, despite their statements that it's not their garden?
And again, the only definition it falls under is a community garden, and those are not allowed in a one-family district.
Commissioner Bickie?
Again, related to this, if the owner acknowledges responsibility and makes an agreement with the neighbors that they have a garden there, wouldn't that be permitted then because it's his land? I mean, you can plant bushes or trees, right? I mean, in terms of not being, I mean, to put in compliance?
It's in, it's in a, I guess I don't know how to say it again in a different way. It's, it's in a one-family district, and the only reason, and the petitioner owns the property, it's not in a, it's, it's not in front of somebody's house, his house. It's not on your individual residential property. There is no provision in the zoning ordinance that allows this to stay under the configuration it's in. So your, your options are the petitioner to say he wants to maintain it, which is not what's been told to staff, because he's not running it, is to grant permission for him as the property owner to pay the fee and go to his ZBA.
But if he was the owner and he wanted to keep the plants, regardless of who comes and waters the plants, if he agrees that they're his plants, they can stay because?
Well, I think you should ask the petitioner. If he wants to keep it, then we'll get into what he can do. If he doesn't want it, then the option is it's going to go away.
As we move forward with master planning, land use, as well as our sustainability plan and the integration, I just wanted to acknowledge that these types of zoning issues are ones that we have to clarify so that there's more flexibility in what can be planted in this type of space. Anyway, just, just for the record, for moving forward. Thank you.
So, Mr. Twing, if I were a developer and, and, you know, proposing landscaping for my building, and instead of saying I was going to have, you know, six boxwoods and three arborvitae, I said I was going to have 30 tomato plants and, you know, 80 carrot plants and two rows of onions, would that be, I mean, that's landscaping, right? I've defined it. Are these things prohibited?
If it falls under the definition of a community garden, which this does, then we would treat it as such. Again, it would be primarily in your commercial district, not a one-family district.
So, but, but those, those are legitimate, could be legitimate landscaping materials, just like boxwood and maple trees?
But it could fall under the commercial.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to ask one more clarification. So this is a commercial building. There's a public alley, and then on the other side of the alley, where the parking and the garden is, that's one-family residential. Is that correct, just for the record?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments, or we bring the petitioner up at this point in time? Okay, let's ask the petitioner to come up, introduce yourself, and tell us why you are entitled to this relief.
Good evening. My name is Hans Rindshop. I'm the law firm of Atkinson, Allen Rindshop. I'm here representing the petitioner tonight. With me is Greg Bertanian, who is the operator, as was Harald Slevin, who's the owner of the operations. As you've mentioned, we are here seeking a special land use permit for the outdoor patio with the alcohol service, as well as site plan approval for the, the construction that's being done there. The property is own neighborhood business, as mentioned, and obviously, outdoor cafes with alcohol service are permitted in the district with special land use approval. As mentioned, during the COVID-19 pandemic, serious parts of it, this was utilized as an outdoor service without any issues, to our knowledge. Apparently, there was one issue, noise from music, but music's not going to be part of this revised plan. We've not had any parking problems at all. There've been no complaints on that, and we understand that parking remains an issue, just purely based upon a technical reading of the ordinance, and we are working to address that. In fact, since we submitted it, we already have, do have a memorandum of parking lease for some additional spaces. We're not quite there yet, but we'll continue to work on them and would be seeking, would like the opportunity to see the variance if we can't get all the way there. So I'm going to address tonight three areas, especially the special land use criteria, the planning division's comments on special land use, as well as the planning division's comments on the site plan. Regarding special land use criteria, as you well know, there are certain criteria to be considered in issuing special land use. We feel that we have met those criteria, and I'll go through each of those. First was, will the use be harmonious in accordance with the general objectives, any specific objectives of the master plan? The property's master plan for general commercial, which is a higher, more intense use than the sort of restaurant uses that currently sit in there. We are a commercial use, but we're not a big box. I will quite frankly question what the market is for big boxes are right now anyway, but we feel we're within, within the guidelines of the master plan, if not specifically, specific to it. I think most neighbors would probably prefer a restaurant to a, to a larger building there, but that's what it stands. The second criteria we'll consider is, will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with existing or intended character of the general vicinity, will not change the essential character of the area. Obviously, we're just seeking a patio, so I don't think that constitutes a significant change to the area or to the surrounding neighborhood. The patio is on the north side of the property, away from residential. It's right adjacent to Thirteen Mile Road, which should reduce its impact. As discussed, we are proposing a new fence. The fence will be reduced to five foot, five inches to be consistent with the city's zoning ordinance, and which is seen now be taken down. The hours of operation are not going to be changed, and like I said, construction of the use will should be harmonious with the sort of neighborhood character and what you, what's there now. Third criteria to consider is, will be hazardous, disturbing to existing uses or uses reasonably anticipated in the future? No. The neighbors all get along well in terms of the commercial operations, and as we mentioned, we've had little to no objections from the residential, at least that I'm aware of. And obviously, this has been, you know, in operation now for almost two, almost two years without having any issues on that. So we don't, wouldn't anticipate any issues going forward. Will be adequately served by public services? Yes. Again, we're not talking about a big addition. You already have sufficient public services, water, sewers, utilities. This won't be an addition. I should mention that we are proposing to change an existing bathroom, which was a staff bathroom, to a multi-use bathroom, so there'll be three. Technically, reading it under the ordinance, I don't think a third bathroom is required, but given that that was a concern raised by the, the city, and for practical purposes ourselves, we decided to make that change. Will create, created excessive additional public costs on the city? No, there's, you know, again, there's no additional public costs. Again, we're expanding an existing outdoor service area, which has already been in use. Public costs of there would have been seen now. It's a restaurant first and foremost, not a bar, so you don't see those kinds of issues that you would normally see. Will be consistent with intent and purposes of this chapter and comply with all applicable provisions of standards which are established for said use by this chapter and other applicable codes. Yeah, the use right now is consistent with the zoning ordinance, as mentioned. Obviously, it does require special land use and site plan approval, which is why we're here tonight. All applicable provisions should be able to be met, with the exception of parking, which, like I said, we are working on. We are aware of that. But, you know, you know, it's not been an issue. Hopefully, we can figure out a way to make this work. So everything, as far as the compliance with existing ordinance, as to my knowledge, is, is compliance. We've removed the stage. We've reduced the fencing. We're putting a new fencing that's contingent with it. So we should be, I think, met most of the criteria set forth in the special land use. Regarding specific issues on special land use addressed by the planning division, as I talked about parking, we are still short on that. Design and operational standards, like I said, no outdoor stage, no outdoor music. Fencing will be changed to wood. It's going to be wood fence, one by four slats, fastened horizontally. And like I said, it'll be five foot, five inches tall. There will be a side gate for egress only. Building code standards, we are modifying the existing bathroom, as I mentioned. Waste disposal, yes, dumpsters are not in the enclosures right now. I was out there, I think, about a week or so ago. If you've been out there recently, you can see why. The Consumers Energy has the neighboring property torn to smithereens. They're actually selling pretty bad business loss because of Consumers Energy's actions, and to try to put, get everything, trucks and everything else there, they have not been utilized in the enclosures. It's my understanding. Finally, with regards to the garden with parking like greenbelt, I think we're willing to remove it. We'd rather not. It's just going to upset the neighbors. Again, it's being tightly well-kept. I don't think we're having an interest in having an ugly garden there either, because it's not in our best interest to have, you know, bad landscaping. We're trying to have a nice patio. We're trying to have a nice business. So, like I said, we are, I think we are willing to remove it, but all that's really going to get us is some angry neighbors, and we'd rather not have angry neighbors. So that's ultimately, you know, your decision, whether as part of special land use, you insist that, in site plan approval, that you insist it be removed. As mentioned, we are seeking a liquor license, and that plan of operation has been filed with the city and is pending for. As you know, we've kind of tried to run these two actions contemporaneously. Finally, in regards to site plan approval, as we said, we're good with almost all changes proposed by the site plan approval, the only one being is the, is the neighborhood garden. So in conclusion, you know, people like to eat outside, especially after COVID-19, and while, you know, the official pandemic's over, a lot of people still have concerns about it and would still prefer to eat outside. And so that is something that people like and enjoy, both for just having it a nice place to be, but also for safety reasons. And I think it's a benefit to, to all the patrons to have that and to be allowed to continue to use it. As mentioned, we've had no problems with the patios, and we did, and quite frankly, I didn't realize it wasn't officially permitted until just the planner's review notes on it. They came out this past month. So I, we were under the impression it had been approved, but that was a miscommunication, I guess, on our part. We realized the parking is not technically satisfied, but in actuality, it has, it is satisfied. We've never had a problem with it. So, but we'll work, again, we're willing to work on that, try to address that issues. You know, the garden, I said we can move it. We'd rather not. Everything else we believe has been or will be adjusted, and therefore, we're respectfully requesting special land use and site plan approval. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Other questions for the petitioner from the panel?
Ms. Bickie? When you say you haven't had issues with parking, does that mean even with this outdoor structure, that, that either people are coming walking or coming by some other means, so they don't need a parking space, or the restaurant stays somewhat empty in one space and more people are sitting outside, so you, you literally don't, you haven't found that you need additional parking spaces?
That is my understanding, unless you gentlemen can say otherwise. My understanding is parking has not been an issue. You know, the way that, that area is laid out is kind of unique. You know, they have an infomulvin with a frame shop next door, which has additional 10 parking spots there, and they've been, you know, they're in different hours of operation, so I think people, some people park there, and it's just, it's, it's not been a problem. And there's parking behind, there's parking across the street. The amount of parking that I do have is for some additional parking that's across Prairie Street. So it's just not been an issue at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I have a couple. Oh, just real quick.
Ordinarily, we do the special land use first and then the site plan. Is that right? But is it appropriate while the petitioner's up in front to ask about site plan question?
Sure. We've covered both, but you'll have two separate motions.
Yeah, good. I'll just, neighborhood establishments interest me. I'm excited that this is doing well at that location. I hope it continues to do well. But the ability to bike to this place might be, you know, a win for a neighborhood establishment like that. Is there a possibility of putting some bike racks, which might help alleviate some of the parking issues from the neighborhood as well?
Yeah, I think that's something we'd definitely be willing to look into.
That was my whole question. Thank you.
All right, yeah.
I have a couple of questions. Do you have a plan to enclose the waste receptacles? I have to tell you, when I was there, not only was the dumpster outside of the enclosure, but so were several other trash receptacles. Do you have a plan?
My understanding is that will be cured. Obviously, some violation of the ordinance and violation of approved site plan, so it should be cured.
Okay, but my question was, do you have a plan?
Do you have a plan? I think, I think there's a receptacle area that's sufficient to put, house them now, unless you think?
Is that in the site plan?
So the issue with it, there's lines that are conflicting where the receptacle is, and our, the GFL cannot get through there because of the lines, because they can't move their, their truck. And so the reason why, and then we weren't getting our trash taken care of. So then we, they suggested us to take it out, so they can take the trash out. But once consumer energy is done, then it will be back into the receptacle.
Okay, everything is going back?
Everything, yes, yes, for sure. We don't want it out by any means.
There's no, no additional structure that's going to be created?
No, I don't, I don't believe there's necessarily to have additional structure, just use the one we have that can be made usable now.
Okay, thank you. I have another question. I wasn't sure I was 100% clear on your answer about the garden. What is your intention with the garden?
Our intention is to follow whatever the recommendation of this body is. If you're telling us that you, as part of site plan approval, that you don't want that garden there, well, listen to it. It's not, again, it's not our garden. We don't have an extreme attachment to it, but we would prefer to leave it there simply because it looks nice and the neighbors like it. And to remove it is just be making people mad, which we're not really wanting to do.
All right. Last question. You have on your building the trim lighting, the very bright white trim lighting around the windows in the front. That is not part of your request, but my question would be, are you wed to those? Because I, when we move along a little further, I think they're non-conforming. I will explain to you which ordinances they are, but before I even get into that, they're very, very bright. They glare. They throw light off the property. Are you willing to consider a condition where I'd be able to convince my fellow commissioners to replace one, to remove those if we grant?
I'd have to turn my client.
Your relief?
You good with that? Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the petitioners?
Again, sorry, it's sort of a procedural question. I think I understood regarding this garden area that we're calling it, this landscaping, if you want to recall it or rename it, that it's possible, just like the parking issue, to allow them to seek a variance from ZBA regarding that garden? Is that a thing, or am I making that up?
Yeah, I think it did indicate that the options that were there were to grant permission to seek away any necessary variances.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the petitioners? Mr. Klooster?
Yes. So because the package is lacking full elevations, I just want to confirm I'm understanding the proposal. The entire, you know, six, approximately 60 feet and eight inches of the frontage is intended to be a closed-in patio on the frontage with a five-and-a-half-foot-tall fence?
Correct.
And then the canopy portion is the approximately 18 feet by 20 feet square somewhat in the middle of that area?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
And the canopy is intended to be seasonal? Come down in cooler months is the intent?
It's not, it's not an enclosed canopy. It's just going to be, yeah, seasonal through probably September or something.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the petitioner? I think we need to call for public comment, if there is any. If you'd mind having a seat, let me call and see if there's any public comment. All right. At this time, anybody who wants to speak on the special land use request by this petitioner, please come up, introduce yourself, and give your opinion. Anybody? Seeing, okay, go ahead. You have three minutes. Please, please introduce yourself.
I'm Dr. Louis Corey, and I used to have an office just down the road from these gentlemen. They don't know me. I don't know them. I was at 4045 West Thirteen Mile Road for a long time as a dentist, and I think the area could use a boost like they're proposing. So if my opinion matters, I, I think the area really needs what these gentlemen are proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to this side of the table. Are there comments? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just give, I mean, there's a lot of detail here. There's some things that need to be cleaned up, you know. Talk about enclosures, talk about fence heights, and talk about, you know, bathrooms and things like that. But at a 10,000-foot level, to me, I'm satisfied that the status quo over the last couple of years, having the outdoor dining attribute coupled even with the landscaped area off Prairie, has worked. And so I think in the spirit of it, we're fortunate enough to have something that's worked, and the parking's worked, and the landscaping has worked. And so as much as we can stick to, you know, what's worked, I think everyone will be successful. And so I'll support a motion that, you know, reflects that in general.
All right. Other comments? Okay, I'm, anybody else here? I'm going to make a quick comment here. I just want to say that I don't know where you got your chefs and stuff like that. I, I eat at, at the restaurant. Last time I ate there, I ate too much, and I ate too much because I couldn't stop eating.
I ate too much because I couldn't stop eating because the food was so good. And then I had dessert. That's a true story. You can ask my daughters. They're with me. Anyways, I love the place. And, but I, and I agree with, with the mayor. I'm in favor of granting the relief requested and permission to go to the zoning board, but I would ask that we consider and add a condition that the white glaring trim lights be removed. I do believe they're in non-conformance, just for the record, because we, if we, if we give a condition, we have to say why. I believe the lighting is in violation of 770-96B2, B3B, B3C, B3D, and B3G. So, but we have the petitioners saying they will remove them if we grant that condition. So, I would suggest we do. Is there a motion or further discussion on the special land use only?
Mr. Klooster, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Douglas.
Okay. Uh, yes, um, I'll move the, I think any of the issues that we have here on the site plan, so I will move the approval of the special land use.
Here's where you'd give permission to go to the ZBA for parking and/or the market garden or community garden?
Oh, okay.
The landscape garden?
Special land use, oh, thank you. In that case, I will, I'll amend my motion to grant them permission to, um, approach the zoning board for their parking variance and their community garden activity.
By being pipe up, I would, that, it's your motion, but this is also, the special land use is where we would impose the condition that I suggested if you were going to.
It is?
Yes.
But not the site plan?
Not the site plan. The light? Yeah. No, you can put it on the, yeah, you can put it on the site plan. Okay.
I agree with you, but I.
Yeah, okay, very good. Any other comment? Mr. Curtis?
I believe that needs a support. I would support that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So, we have a motion and support to approve the special land use, including permission to go to seek variances from the ZBA for the parking and the garden. Okay? Any further discussion? I think I will call for a voice vote here. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, no opposed. All right, congratulations. Special land use is granted. All right, now, site plan. Do we need to have any further discussion with the petitioner or are we ready to move forward with the motion?
So, what do we have floating around here? The, the lighting, the bike rack?
Well, and then you would modify 1E to not require the garden to be removed. Well, you could just add a statement to it that says either it's removed or the zoning board appeals grants the necessary variances.
Got it, okay.
All right. Anyone willing to formulate a motion here? For the site plan, just for the record, there's, uh, the department recommends 1, 2, 3 through 10, but we're going to make a couple of adjustments. Mr. Curtis?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take crack at the motion. I'd like to move to approve the site plan, contingent upon meeting the 10 recommendations here that the planning department has placed, however, amending 1E to say, uh, either it's removed, the right-of-way landscaping is removed unless ZBA were to give them a variance there. And then, but I would also like to add to the motion that, as the petitioners have indicated, their willingness to add bike racks and remove the lighting in the windows that you were talking, you were talking about in the windows?
Yes, trim lighting.
Yeah.
All right. Is there a second? Mr. Mayor, second. So, okay. So, we have a, the motion to approve the site plan with the 10 contingencies except for 1E modified that, that would only be if the zoning board denies the request because we're giving them permission to do that, the bike racks, and removal of the white trim lights. Is there any further discussion? All right. I'm going to call for the vote by voice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Wish you continued success. I'll be back. Two more steps, sorry.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next order of business is a site plan to enclose truck well. This is at 32525 North Stevenson Highway. Mr. Twing, tell us about this.
Well, this site is in the northeast corner of the city. It's behind or adjacent to Mark Twain Park, also Midtown Square, if you're familiar with that area. Access to it is actually across other properties that are located in Madison Heights from Stevenson Highway. So, you'll see in the aerial that, uh, the property is surrounded. It is zoned general industrial. The petitioner is proposing a building addition, basically enclosing an existing truck well and then constructing a mezzanine within the existing building. It does comply with parking requirements. They're required to have 27 based on the storage in the office space in the building, and they are providing 40. The site is pretty much existing in terms of that parking layout, the screening to the west and so on, and they're proposing very few changes to the exterior. They do or did submit an easement document that, that shows access across the properties that front Stevenson. We're still reviewing that, but they, they have submitted one. So, briefly to go through the staff recommendation, we are asking that they provide some additional information on the elevations to clarify the floor plan layout for the mezzanine. And then, there's a higher tower. If I get to the elevation, I'll show you where I'm referring. Basically, if you, the one on the screen, to clarify where the floor lines are within the building. It's my understanding that some revisions were dropped off today, but given this is what we have, I would recommend that contingency number one remain in that the, they shall revise the proposed facade elevations to show the correct floor and ceiling elevations. Again, based on the floor plan, they have some stairways and things inside that we're looking for clarification on in a cross-section. Number two is in regards to the easement that I was referring to, to show that they did have access, vehicle access ingress, egress from Stevenson. And there was a preliminary document dropped off that we are currently reviewing. All the other contingencies are standard contingencies for site plan. I will point out that the building addition is technically about 1,300 square feet, and they're enclosing an existing truck well over in this area. And then, they are building the mezzanine, basically indicated in, in these two areas on the upper floors.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Twing? All right, seeing none, let's ask the petitioner to approach.
I'm Dr. Louis Corey, and I appreciate your time here tonight and looking for a favorable decision. I, I did drop off the requested information, Mr. Twing, and it was probably yesterday, and also requested that it was emailed to you as well. We've complied with all the requests by the board. So, you know, I'm looking forward to any questions you may have of me that I can answer.
All right. Are there any questions for the petitioner? Okay, I'll just ask one very quickly. So, if I understand what you just said, you have no problem with any of the contingencies that have been stated here?
I do not, and we've complied. And I, I brought them with me here tonight if anybody needs to view them as well. But again, we've emailed them. I've dropped them off in advance of the meeting, you know, inclusive of the easement and whatnot. So, yes, we, we intend to comply completely.
All right. Any, any questions for the petitioner? Other questions? All right, hearing none. We'll bring it back to the side of the table. And is there any discussion on this side of the table regarding the site plan? Is there a motion? Mr. Curtis?
I would move to approve the site plan contingent upon meeting all seven of the recommendations from city staff.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Beeky. All right, is there any further discussion? If, if not, don't see any, I will call for the vote by voice vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Good luck to you. All right. Next order of business is a sign variance, SB 22-08-04. This is at 31800 Woodward Avenue, the Tommy's, the New Tommy's Car Wash, Express Car Wash. Mr. Twing?
Well, I'm going to try to go through this so you can kind of understand it. There's a lot of signs and a lot of sign labeling on it. You'll see in the staff report that the, uh, it's in sign area two. It's entitled to have a ground sign with 16 feet in height and 42 square feet in area. But the petitioner is proposing to have 16 signs that would be defined as ground signs under the ordinance. They are listed there as one pylon sign that's 16 feet by 42 square feet. Then, there are three ground signs that are kind of a snap frame sign along the front of the building with a little over 6 and 1/2 feet in height and 8.5 square feet in area. In the report, you'll see that they're labeled A1, A2, and A3. The spec sheets also have those indicated in the corner of the submissions. So, if you're trying to track which ones they're referring to, let me get down and point it out. So, the sign labels, we've highlighted in green, the ones that need variances. And you'll see the labeling on the plan as well, the ones that need variances. And then those relation to the further in the spec sheet, those numbers match up. Just so if you're trying to follow. And then, there are actually detailed sheets with those labels in the corners as well, if you're trying to follow along from page to page. There are two lane identification panels that are 3 and 1/2 feet on 7 square feet in area. Those are T1 and T2. Now, there are three gatearm panels in each stacked lane. There are 10 inches and 5.9. Those are all labeled as U1, U2, and U3. And then, there are two more ground snap signs that are 6 and 1/2 feet, and those are labeled B6A, B6B, B7A, and B7B. And then, the last one are five ground signs that are above the vacuum stalls, and those are all labeled with a V.
Can you sort of tell us where we start here? That, for, for this sort of parcel, the, they would be entitled to have what? Just so I know where we're starting.
Well, you're starting with a one ground sign.
Mm-hmm.
In, in sign area two of 16 feet with 42 square feet in area. They're proposing some 16 that are also considered ground signs. Then, they have a wall sign that's above the rough line that needs a variance. So, again, if you look at the green in the, in the, that's been highlighted, those are the ones that are considered ground signs. Those are the ones that need variances. And then, further in the packet, you'll see the detail on each one of those.
All right. Are there?
Yeah, I have a question.
You have a question?
Sorry, Mr. Curtis? For Mr. Curtis. The sign two category allows for the ground sign, 16 feet high, 42 square feet total. But it doesn't disallow an additional building sign, right? You can have both in a sign two.
You can have walls, you can have a wall sign on each facade.
Okay.
The, the only reason the wall sign on the front elevation or the west elevation needs a variance is because it's above the rough line. There is one on the south side that's also included in the packet that doesn't need a variance. And there's also a sign on the back on the east side that doesn't need a variance.
Ms. Beeky?
A reminder slash reconfirmation because I have had regret after I've seen signs go up when my dear colleagues have said they shouldn't be approved and I did approve them. And so, I just want to remind myself and everyone, way, wayfinding signs are what we are looking for. Signs that are advertising services, saving water, different apps, these kind of things, that's, that's what we're intending to not allow, advertising signs as far as variances, right? In general, we're looking for wayfinding. Correct? I just want to reconfirm that for myself.
Can't read the sign. Comments on that? Responses? Commissioner Douglas?
In fact, I think the, I think the ordinance actually speaks to the purpose of signage being for wayfinding and not for advertising. Thank you.
All right. Other responses to that? Mr. Klooster?
I just have a question, looking for confirmation from Mr. Twing, that LED message board signage is permitted in sign zone, sign zone two or sign area two?
Along Woodward, you can propose message centers.
I'll follow up with that. Is the, is the one here of conforming size the one that they're proposing?
Is there one? Is that what you're asking me?
Maybe there's more than one. I understand there's at least one electronic messaging sign being proposed. My question is, were they, to come in here, that was the only thing they were asking for, that, would that be a conforming sign?
Yes, it's not listed as an issue. What's listed is the issue are there's more than one freestanding sign.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Other questions for Mr. Twing? Okay, I'm going to call a petitioner up here. Please introduce yourself and present your case as to why you are entitled to this relief you're asking for.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Dennis Cowan with Plunka Cooney, here representing Michigan Express, which owns the Tommy's Express franchise for this area. And with me is the principal of Michigan Express, Cliff Lunny, who's been a very busy man because not only is he constructing a building, but he's in training with companies. So, we got him, we got him away for a night. This is his only free night, and he's here to spend it with all of you fine people. And also, our landlord, Jordan Jonah. I must say, just to set the tone, as I was preparing for tonight, I, I was trying to find, and I'm not very technically correct on Spotify, the five-man electrical band song about signs. Some of you are old enough to remember that or may have heard it. So, I, I thought that would be an appropriate background song, but I couldn't find it. So, I can't play it while I'm up here tonight. We've been here, this is our third time that we're here before you. We were here for a site plan and special land use about a year ago. Tremendous progress made since that time. And you might remember, we were here in November because we were able to acquire a building adjacent to, to the north that had a, I think it was a Golden Harvest Restaurant or Harvest Restaurant that had been there and really had not, not been doing well. And, and so, that gave us an additional, I believe it was 25, 20 to 25 feet. And you were able to approve also that request to expand the footprint of the property and some adjacent, and some attendant changes. So, we appreciate and thank you because if you've been driving on Woodward lately, you've seen that in about the last, it's only been not even 90 days, that construction has started and the main part of the principal building is already up. And we anticipate that that will be opening very soon, and Mr. Lunny can talk more to that. Just from a structural viewpoint with respect to the sign variances. Just from a structural viewpoint with respect to the sign variances, we are allowed one ground sign, and we consider that sign to be the pylon sign. Because as the, as been pointed out in the staff memo, that meets all requirements and, but for the other variances requested, we wouldn't need a variance for that one, as I think has been mentioned. So that leaves us with the other 15. And although that seems to be a lot for a car wash business that is pretty standard in terms of directional signage, safety signage, which Mr. Lunny will talk about, identification signage, so people know where to go, and some of them are about the options that they do have. None of these signs on the ground are backlit or frontlit or trying to draw attention to themselves, nor are they intended to advertise to the public who is on Woodward, driving on Woodward or walking. All of these signs are meant to be interior signs. And quite frankly, because of the elevation of the property there and the landscaping and the wall that will go up, you probably won't be able from Woodward, unless you're really looking for it and there's a backup of traffic, to see any of those internal signs. So we think that these signs, by and large, are internal signs and distinguish themselves from signs that are trying to attract the public or trying to attract sales or even attract vehicles. We don't believe that that's necessary, and that is not the purpose of the sign. As to the wall-mounted sign that we're talking about, it has been shown, we don't have a straight-line roof line. We have an irregular roof line. We have in essence, two towers, and then the lowest point is what some consider to be the roof line between the two towers. That wall-mounted sign fits very nicely, it's centered. It may be above the lowest part of the roof line, but it's clearly not above the roof line where it's placed. It's several feet above. So we would respectfully ask for your allowance and variance with respect to that property. And also, I think, hopefully, the vacuum signs will be an easy approval, because we need to tell people that they can use those vacuum signs when they come out of the car wash, that is to the immediate right, and they'll see those signs, and if they need to use a vacuum, they'll be able to use, it'll be clearly identified. You may recall, particularly on our visit back here in August, that the primary concern that the planning commission had and that we shared was any potential stacking. So as a result, we took the extraordinary step of suggesting, and you agreed, that we would have in essence, three lanes, 21 stacking spaces, more than I think any other location has on Woodward Avenue. But I think, hopefully, you would agree that not only doing that, but in order to have the prompts and the appropriate signage to move people through the facility in a efficient manner, and that is what signage does. And I think Mr. Lunny will explain that and walk you through, going through the, from your entrance through the car wash, and why the signage is needed. Again, ours is typical. I did include in my letter another competitor that had rather loud signs, and they're entitled to that. But we believe our signs are more planned, more efficient, and again, not meant to advertise to the general public, but only to help people make choices so they can be efficient in moving along, and also directional and safety signs. So I'm gonna let Mr. Lunny, who's lived with these signs and worked through them and knows the need for all of them, and let him speak. Go ahead.
Take your name again for the record?
Cliff Lunny.
Thank you.
So if we could maybe go to the layout on there, right here? That's fine, either on any of those. So again, the sign that is P3119, that would be the pylon sign. So that would be our one sign under the ordinance that we're not looking for approval. We do meet the criteria on that. It's the other signs? And so I'd like to kind of just take you through, if I can. The first set, as if you were to enter into the car wash and you were to drive up to the canopy or the different lanes, we have a system that really allows traffic to flow very freely through there. So the first lane is basically a pay lane. If you wanted to sign up for a membership, if you just wanted a single car wash, if you had some questions or anything like that, that's the first lane. And it's identified on that with one of the signs, which is the T signs, T1 and T2, I believe. So those two signs are really directional signs. And if you look at them, what you don't see is on the backside of those signs, there's actually an eye or a camera that reads license plates. So on the right two, we have a third lane, right? So on the right two sides there, we identify them as if you have an app, if, a mobile app, if you have a membership with us, or you're using a gift card that you've loaded onto your mobile app. So they simply pull up, the license plate is red, and the gate will go up, and they go through the car wash. So it's important that we identify which lanes they go in, because if they go in the first lane, it starts to slow things up. So if they're in there, and they would normally just flow through, but now they're not able to, because they're, you know, talking to a customer service agent and we're signing them up for a membership, or even just the slowness of collecting a fee for the car wash can slow things down more than if you're just going through the other two lanes. So the first ones, T1 and T2, that is the primary focus of those two lanes. And you can see the, on the backside there, where we do have that, there you go, thank you so much for that, you can see the lens, and that's what reads the backside of the license plate. So we really look at those as more directional signs from that standpoint. The next two signs are the signs that actually sit on top of the gate. In the car wash business, as you can imagine, we run into a lot of different types of drivers. And some of the drivers, there's a, what happens is that our system will recognize who's next in line. So there is a wait as you pull up. It'll wait, and it will let one car, whoever the first car was, it'll let them go through. And if you're the second car in the third lane, it would wait until that car goes through, and then it would lift up the gate to obviously stop the bottleneck of everyone, gate opening all at once, and they're all going. So when we sit there, we have always had problems with drivers sometimes pulling a little too quickly, or daydreaming, or looking at their phone, and they notice that the gate next to them may have gone up, and they go, and it takes out our gate. And those gates are expensive. So once it gets pushed into, you know, the gate is non-functional, and we have to replace that. So what the brand has found is by putting on those identifiers that are, I definitely agree, they solicit, or they talk about welcome back, or you should sign up for our club, or different things like that, and you can see that they're a little three-dimensional in the fact that they stick up higher. We find it draws our attention to them. And we, by having them, it lessens the amount of, I won't say accidents, but times that the gates are knocked down. So that's the primary focus of those. Again, typically, you know, they move pretty quick, within 30 seconds of pulling up to that sign, and that gate goes up. The next set of signs are, if you go back to the layout, I just want to make sure everyone can see that on there, please. Can you go to the one more? I think that the signs B, is what we're looking at? On the layout, it would be, it's actually when you go through, I'm looking at...
Is that the number?
Yeah, it's B.6. It should be exactly where it's on here for you.
That's B6.
If you look at, it's these signs right here that are coming around here. Once you go through the gate.
Label.
Those two on the far right, as you're making a turn.
Okay, so all right. So those, those signs, I don't know if you can go to the larger side, but those are really important, because what it does is as they're stacked up, and we typically will have no more than five cars that are stacked once they get through the gate, those signs talk about, you know, do not enter. They talk about prepare to load, and your car's gonna be in neutral. So we start to, again, our business is a really flow-through, and it becomes self-sufficient. We don't have a lot of employees sitting out directing the traffic on either end. So what happens is our customers get very familiar, and then they go on to this belt system. So as they go on to the next queue in the, in line, as they start to enter to tunnel, it's a voice prompt that will tell them, please put your car in neutral. And then we have the conveyor belt that takes the tire and then takes them all the way down it. So it's important for us, you know, on three of these signs are very, very important, because it talks about the prepare to load, it talks about putting your car in neutral. The other one talks about, you know, just the entrance, you know, is not on this side of the building, which is on the far side. So it's an exit, you know, don't enter there. And then the other one, which we call B.6A, which is, it just says, just to be safe. This really talks about, you know, everything that we take care of. So if someone's going through there, for instance, and they have a pickup truck, and they have a lot of different things, debris or different things in the back, or if they have an, especially on Woodward, we see this a lot, in aftermarket items that they could have on there, whether it was, you know, like what you would call a bra or a brow that would, a bug, or the ones that you'll see on a pickup truck that kind of go over the window a little bit, anything like that, we talk about, you know, that's something that you don't want to go through the car wash with. And so we identify that, and we make sure that they understand that, and that they're at risk if they go through, that it could be damaged. So those three signs are very important. The fourth sign, I completely agree with the panel, is, you know, we like to let everyone know that we give back to the community, and we give back on every single car wash. And so that's just talking about, you know, the less water that we use and the different things from that standpoint. So it's more of an education of who we are and everything from that standpoint. The last set of signs, the vacuum signs, I'll discuss in a second, but the last set of signs are the ones that are along the building. And these are by far the most marketing signs that we do have. I was there today and just looking, they have the wall up and everything, and the site sits lower than the wall because of the way it goes. It's virtually impossible to see any of these signs from Woodward. So that's, if you're in lane one, it's really set up to start to stage them on, if you're in lane one, you don't have a membership, so you're sitting in what would be the longest wait lane. So it talks about, you know, our app and join the club, because we really push them to that, because then they speed through much faster than they would if they didn't have that. So the purpose of those marketing signs is certainly to get people to sign up for the app, is to identify different things on there. But really, our primary focus on there is about throughput. It's throughput, helping the customer understand how we, how our services will benefit them mostly in the event if they have the app and different things from that standpoint. Any questions?
Questions for the petitioner? Ms. Beeky.
Have you provided signs for or operate a similar car wash in another location that has restricted the signs, in comparably to our zone, our sign?
Yeah, so the other car wash that's open to date in the area is in Orion Township, or basically Auburn Hills, across the street from the Costco and the Meyer over there off of Brown Road. And they have the same signs. Matter of fact, I was there today, meeting with the owner over there, and they have all the same signs on their property that we're proposing.
Right, and I would just like to say that that's a very different kind of location, a very ex-urban suburban, and we're in an urban location. And while Woodward is far wider than it probably should be right now, we have to be conscientious that we have, you know, homes, and it's a different location and a different kind of setting. And so we'd expect something, I think, a little bit more discreet.
I would just add that, again, they won't, the homes, you won't see that with the landscape and everything that we have with the, remember, we do have a fence that sits up, I think, at 30 inches around the entire space.
I mean, the whole corridor, not just from the homes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole corridor.
Other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Grantina.
So the gate arms, the photos would make it appear that those are lighted, there's a small row of LEDs at the bottom of those gate arms, is that accurate? Am I seeing that correctly, I guess is the question?
I'm not aware of those being lit at all. They may be lit in the evening, in the winter months, just to shine down, just so they can see the gate. But that would be more a gate thing and not on the sign itself, but I'm not, honestly, I'm not positive on that one.
Yeah, I didn't see any electrical requirements specific to those signs, but I guess the photos would make it appear that they have lighting at the bottom of them, unless I'm seeing that incorrectly. So the question that I have then actually would be, back to Mr. Twing, if in fact those are lighted arms for those gates, does that complicate things and change those signs into lighted signs? Or does it not matter at this point?
Well, there's nothing to preclude them from being lit. They look like to me they're reflective more than have any lighting in them.
Maybe that's what I'm seeing.
In the comment on that, you'd be surprised if, you know, someone goes through, and they start, one of our biggest issues is someone backs up in some of those situations, so...
Yeah, the, I guess the visual I'm referring to is on, would be on the backside of the sign, so makes sense. Thank you.
I have a question. The documents we have here, I believe they show two different versions of the gates-mounted sign, but you're gonna have three gates, right?
We have three gates, yes.
So what are they gonna look like? Which ones are they gonna be? Are they gonna be, oh, I guess...
Yeah, it should be the top one there. All three of those would be what they would look like.
Okay, is one of those showing the back? So you're gonna have two that say welcome back, and one that says join the unlimited car wash or wash club?
Correct.
Questions for the petitioner from anybody? All right, hearing none. Perhaps we will, this is not a, this is not a public hearing, so we're bringing it back to this side of the table. Let's have a discussion among the commissioners. You can stay there if you want, or you sit down and maybe call back up.
Okay, in case you have questions, sir.
Comments? Okay, well, I will start then, since, here's what I would say, and I guess I would also address the petitioner with this. You know, the sign ordinance is what it is for different reasons. I did look at the ordinance after the comment from Commissioner Douglas, and wayfinding is actually, I don't think, in the ordinance, but it does say that it should be for identification of premises, not for brand names, not for advertising. But they also are to enable the public to locate goods, services, and facility without excessive difficulty. And so on, like a drive-thru like we have here, there is that purpose, which would justify, I think, in my mind, some variances. But I have to say that I would hope that a petitioner would say to themselves, why, I'm gonna go ask for the minimum amount of, I'm gonna reduce the unnecessary signage when I go to ask for relief. And there's a lot of signs here, I think, that are overreaching. I certainly don't think that the B, whatever it is, B7 with the water, I don't think A1, A2, A3 are necessary, they certainly don't fit the bill. I also would say, for instance, on the vacuum sign, I'm in favor of that variance, because that fits the purpose of the statute. You want to know where the facility is. Well, the facility's over here, it's a vacuum. But you've got five vacuum signs. I don't know why you need five vacuum signs. So I don't, what I don't see is an effort to minimize the number of signs, which I'm a little disappointed in. I think that we would prefer that we be presenting something that we can just say yes to, if it's, if it makes sense. But you've given us a lot of signs here. So myself, I would, there's at least four of the signs. I'm a little unclear of how I think about the gate signs. You've told us something important there, that they do serve a purpose. T1 and T2 serve a purpose, but as just to repeat myself, A1, A2, A3, and the... But as just to repeat myself, A one, A two, A three and the water sign, I would not be in favor of. I also would say, as for the wall sign facing Woodward, I agree with the petitioner, that is a wall sign on a parapet, not a roof sign. So I would be, I would not be concerned about that. But those are my comments. Any other comments?
Mr. Klooster.
Uh, yeah, so the plan is like really conveniently split. Um, we have two site plans. And the first site plan has mostly directional signage and the two wall signages. And I don't, um, I don't really take much challenge to these. I think the directional signage is with the enter, the exit, with arrows directing people where to go, that makes sense. It will help corral the three lanes and the stacking. And, um, I agree with the wall sign that it's, uh, while technically above the roof line, kind of fits within the character of not being sticking up above the parapet line. The second site plan page, um, I could, I could hear an argument for T one and T two. Uh, I think the rest of these signs are completely unnecessary. The vacuums look like vacuums. They don't need to be labeled as vacuums. The signage on the gate arms is unnecessary signage. It's a gate arm. Putting a sign on it isn't going to make it less likely to be run into. The T one and the T two, I like, I don't know that it's absolutely necessary, but I could see the argument for splitting the lanes and keeping things moving at a relatively good pace. The limited liability signage in the B series, I don't think that is necessary as signage. It just adds unnecessary clutter. So, yeah, I would say I'm generally in support of the signs that are shown on the first site plan and generally not supportive of the signs that are shown on the second site plan.
All right, are there further comments after that? I will also say there's another issue I have. And that is that because there's so many signs and we do get these sorts of requests with fast food and other drive-through, I'm also concerned about the precedent we set by agreeing to approve so many signs, again, that seem unnecessary. That's probably a bad precedent, so I also keep that in mind.
Mr. Cantina.
So I really appreciate the way Mr. Klooster just sort of framed this because I tend to agree that the wayfinding directional signage indicated on the one site plan all seems very reasonable and, if not necessary to me. The wall sign, I tend to agree that's, uh, really fits the intent of the wall sign. And the pylon sign, we've already discussed that is, really isn't an issue and it's only an issue because of these other variances required. But I also agree with the other site plan that, you know, for example, from a wayfinding perspective, the vacuum signs, I think it is reasonable to expect signage over that area. But I agree, I don't think five of them are necessary. The two T signs, I think you could argue that those are directional in the sense that because you do have different types of customers that are going to be coming into those lanes, actually directing them as to which lane they need to be in seem reasonable for those to be there. Um, but I tend to agree with Mr. Klooster that everything else on the other site plan, the informational site signage page, I should say, seems unnecessary to me.
All right, other comments, questions for the petitioner? Formulation of a motion?
Well, my suggestion would be you can, you can take them all as one motion or you can break them down and take them as individual actions. So if you, if you thought, just by example, the one pylon sign at 16 feet, 42 square feet, that's P 3119 if you wanted to grant that one. I'd take it separately and maybe walk through them separately. Or you can try and take them all at once.
Uh, Mr. Curtis.
Well, in the interest of making a little progress, I would move to allow the variance of the wall sign.
Okay, that is a motion to approve the variance. And unfortunately, mine's a little obscure there. What's the number on that? Is that?
P 3119.
No, that's the pedestal sign there.
Oh, I thought you said the pole sign.
Wall.
Sorry. That's WS 61 CW.
Okay, so that's the wall sign and that is to grant variance for that sign. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Is there a discussion? All right, seeing none, I'm going to call for the voice vote. All those in favor of granting the variance for WS, what is it again?
61.
61.
WS 61 CW. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, you have a variance on the wall sign. Any other motions? Doing this one at a time, I think that's a perfectly reasonable idea. Mr. Klooster.
I will move to approve. So it, one of them, some of them are not necessarily all variances, but I'll move to approve ground signs. P 3119, DIR EN 36P, DIR EX 36P, DIR EOSF 36, and DIR EX 36.
All right, is there a second? Support by Mr. Cantina?
Which ones?
They're on the primary site signage page.
All of these.
Sir, I believe those are part of it. They're approved.
The only one that needs variances are, on the front first page, are WS 61 CW and then P 3119. All of the rest of those signs are directional signs and don't need variances.
Understood.
So perhaps Mr. Klooster wants to amend his motion, delimit it to P 3119?
Okay, amend my motion to just approve a variance for ground sign P 3119.
Okay, and.
And I will still second.
Mr. Cantina maintains a second. Any further discussion on this motion?
I have a question. On which sign we're talking about here? Yeah, uh, I know we're talking about that, but which sign does that?
That's the tile.
Oh, does that need a variance?
It does because.
Because of the other sign. Sorry, thank you.
That's that sign.
Yeah, the one, yeah, the main, okay, thank you.
And that has the electronic messaging piece on it?
Wonderful.
Okay, uh, is there further discussion after Mr. Curtis's question on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call for the voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed on that. So we don't need to look at the primary sign page anymore. We're now looking at the informational site signage page for further business. Uh, petitioner wishes to speak and I, go ahead.
Okay, I appreciate everything. Thank you so much. What I would like to, I know I can't propose, I'm on this side, but, um, what I'd like to see if, maybe we could, uh, we drop A one, A two and A three. We'll also do the same on the gate arms, which are the U one, U two and U three. And B point seven B, which is the water one that talks about giving back. And then on the variance, really going for the T one and T two, which are really important because we get people that drive in and if we don't have those signs, it can be overwhelming going on the site not having something that tells you which lane does what. And then keeping the three signs that talk about the safety that we have on there, which would be the ones making the turn going into the car wash, again, going into neutral, talking about things on the car because we do have to identify that. So they understand that, especially for our insurance and different things.
Okay, so you're talking about B seven A, B six A, six B, T one and T two would be what the petition would be interested to urge the panel to maintain?
Correct, so it would be, just to make sure, I'm sorry, I'm flipping here. So what, to maintain would be B six A, B six B, the do not enter, and B seven A, prepare to load. And then the two T ones, and I think it's T two, which are the two that are at the very bottom, very low, that just say what lane it is. So those would be the variance on there. The vacuum signs, I'll just comment on that. We can, I can, we can drop them. It really is just a convenience thing. Sometimes where that sign sits, if you get a truck that comes in there and they are, if you've seen these vacuums, they're very high-tech and they're individualized. So we do get people that, believe it or not, that ask, what are those for? So that's why we have the vacuum sign on each individual one. If you get a big pickup truck that's in there, you may not see if we just had one sign. And we, I don't know how we would do it where we'd go all over them. I think that might be a little bit too in the face kind of thing.
All right, thank you. Ms. Beeky, you have a comment?
I want to make a comment that, you know, following Mr. Klooster's earlier comments, that I agree that most of the extraneous signs and other comments that have been made here by yourself, Mr. Casada as well, other extraneous signs, um, I would, I would prefer that they be removed. And I, even the vacuum signs, I think, once your clients use them once, they'll know what they are. Um, and again, a more discreet appearance, I think, is more appropriate for the location. But I agree on anything that would help for the wayfinding, T one, T two and the others that were noted. Excuse me.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I'll just say, I really don't object to any of these signs. They're not going to be visible to the, to the public at all on the street. Um, but if, if, you know, commissioners do, I mean, I will support commissioners who want to reduce this signage. But if there were a motion to approve most or all of it, I wouldn't object to that either.
Thank you. Other comments, motion formulated?
Mr. Curtis.
I'll make a run at a motion to approve the variance of T one, T two, B six A and six B, and also B, I don't know which is which side.
Seven A. Thank you.
All right.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Is there discussion?
Just so that I heard it right. The motion was to approve.
T one and T two.
T one and T two.
B six A and six B.
B six A, B and six B and seven A.
Seven A, yeah.
I think it's B seven, yes.
B seven A.
All right. Discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote, voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, one no. But the motion passes. So, um, that's where we are right now. And is there any other motions or discussions on this?
Aren't those As?
Uh, the, just for the record, what we have not voted on yea or nay are the vacuum signs, the A one, two and three and U one, two and three. The petitioner suggested that they could be dropped and I, so I just point that out. Mr. Klooster.
I will make a motion to deny variances for signs V, signs A one, A two and A three, signs U one, U two, and signs B seven B?
Just seven B, I think.
B seven B.
Support.
Mr. Klooster, I think you may have, you said U one and U two, but I think ours are labeled U one, U two and U two again.
Because there's two U twos.
Okay, so did you mean to have all three of those denied in your motion is what I'm guessing?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, and I don't know if that's a type or just because they're the same type, but just for the record, I appreciate the clarification. Okay, um, so the motion is to deny, specifically deny those. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Beeky. All right. Any discussion on this? Just to be clear again, A one, A two, A three, U one, U two and another U two and B seven B. The motion is to deny those.
And all the vacuum signs.
Oh, and B. Okay, and the B signs. All right, is there, and Ms. Beeky seconded. Okay, is there discussion on this?
I, I'm not that worried about the vacuums being labeled. They're not branded as some marketing, you know, there's not an extra Tommy's Express on top of it, but either way is fine with me.
All right, well, I have to say yes. I'm the most, I was a little ambivalent about the vacuum signs because they are a piece of equipment that the patrons are being directed to. So I'm not as, I'm not as offended by those. I've only making the comment that I wasn't sure there needed to be five. Um, I think that's a part of the market. You know, one of the things about this place is that the whole thing is like a sign. It's branding, the whole thing. And so it's already, um, you know, sort of very loudly announcing itself, even without any signs. So anyways, that's my comment there. Is there any further discussion, having the sense that there, Ms. Beeky?
I'll just make one general comment because I agree with that, that the whole thing looks like a sign and it's going to, it'll be noticed. Um, and then just also, Mr. Cowan talked about the stacking. It's been one of our major concerns. And I would say other concerns were both noise and air pollution and such. And so I just wanted to add that to the record because those are other concerns from neighbors and from some of us about the car wash in general.
Mr. Twing, you want to say anything? Okay. All right, I'm going to do it this way. I'm going to call for a roll call vote here because I sense that there's maybe some ambivalence here between, for people. So if you don't, if you guys are ready to vote, I'm, start with Ms. Beeky just to make sure you know what we're doing here. We're voting to deny the As, the U's, B seven B and the Bs. No further discussion, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Beeky, I'm putting it on you.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Cantina.
Yes.
Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
All right, well, I mean, a yes as well. So those are denied. Uh, we do, that's the end of the list of signs. Uh, we do wish you the best of luck doing our jobs up here.
Thank you. Appreciate all the help.
Thank you.
Who supported what prior motion?
Actually, I think it was me. I think I was seconded Paul's motion.
Okay. All right, next order of business. I misplaced my agenda here, but I think it's the administrative plan approval. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, here it is. What do you got for us?
Oh, nothing. This is all informational. Copies of the Michigan Planner for March and April, it's May and June, as well as, um, copies of the plan staff has administratively approved and submitted to the office. All of that's informational.
All right, very good.
Chair.
Yeah, I do want to remind everybody that not being certain that everyone on the commission would see the May-June Michigan Planner, I scanned and sent out the article in there on housing, tools to expand housing choice, supply and affordability. Um, as we look forward to our master plan, I mean, these are some very good ideas that we can bring to the table.
All right, thank you. And I was going to ask at the end here, before we, seeking adjournment, if any of the other commissioners would like to make any statements or ask questions here before we, before we look for an adjournment. Ms. Beeky.
Just one comment that, again, the parks plan is in progress. And so to remind yourselves and your neighbors, et cetera, just to comment on that because the website is up for that, to collect comments. And I think it's important because it will dovetail with this master plan work that we're going to have upcoming. So I just made that comment.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Comments? All right, we are out of business on the agenda today. So if there's a motion to adjourn, that would be appreciated.
I move to adjourn.
Support?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.